Good morning, everybody. I see we have some standing room only here, but we do have a few seats left. I'm going to call this meeting to order, and I'm going to ask our clerk to call the role, please.
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Kerner.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Commissioner McKinley.
One last time.
Commissioner Sacks.
Mayor Weinroth.
Me too.
Vice Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. We're going to do our invocation, Pledge of Allegiance, and my good friend, Commissioner Kerner, would you please do the honors? Everybody, please rise.
Thank you, Mayor. Dear God, as we gather here today, we pray that we are ever mindful of the opportunities to render our service to fellow citizens and to our community. Keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence, let us continue to strive to make a better world. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Commissioner Kerner, and thank you all for coming to Commissioner Moreno's birthday.[88.31][88.31](Laughter) Happy birthday, Commissioner Moreno.
Thank you.
It's your birthday?
It is.
Happy birthday.
Okay, I'm looking to my county administrator for any additions, deletions, or substitutions.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the board, we have one add-on on page five, 3B1. This is staff recommends motion to approve and file our official bonds for the elected, newly-elected and re-elected commissioners.
I am looking for a motion to adopt the agenda. The vice mayor has given me the motion, and the second is by Commissioner McKinley, her second, last second. That being said, all in favor, all opposed, we are now approving the agenda. All right. We're now going to move on to the unfinished business. Item 3A, staff recommending approval of a resolution to Board of County Commissioners. Do I have any discussion on this, or do I have a motion? I have a motion by Commissioner Sacks. I have a second by the vice mayor. All in favor? All opposed? Show that it is approved, seven to zero. All right, we're going to move on now to item 3B1, the add-on. Staff recommending a motion to approve and file. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Commissioner Moreno, second by the vice mayor. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed? Show that it is approved unanimously, seven to zero. Okay, that takes care of our business. Now we're going to go to the comments by the commissioners up here, and as is normally my case, I'm going to do this by district order, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Moreno to start off the commissioner comments.
I'm going to cry now. Wow, start with me. Oh, my heavens.
Well, it's your birthday.
I just want to say thank you all for sharing my birthday with me. Much appreciated. The job we do here is not easy. It takes people with patience, kindness, the ability to trust, the ability to grow, the ability to adjust and be flexible, and I have seen two people do just that. It's... Wow, it's difficult to go first. Holy heavens.[249.48][249.48](Laughter) I guess I set the groundwork, right? So, Bob, actually, for those of you that may not know, Bob and I actually knew each other before county commission, when we both served as elected officials in our municipalities. And Bob did a great job there, and I will miss not seeing you, not seeing your bright and cheery face and your cheery shoes and your cheery jackets. I'm guessing that we'll all find a pair of his shoes in our to-go box or our takeaway bag. But you did this job this year in a wonderful manner, and you did what is necessary of a mayor to, while there may be different ideas and opinions, you would bring those ideas and opinions together and try to bring us all to the middle so that we could come up with the right compromise or solution. And I do appreciate how well you did that.
And I've been working on your last name.
Maria Gloria Gabriela Moreno, just like Dan, you know. Melissa, can I give you a hug? My chairmate for two years.
Thanks for the blanket.
Sometimes they say opposites attract. I don't know. I think Melissa and I, actually, there were a lot of things that we were so much in common. And as the card says that I left in your bag, the work we do for families and children in this community far exceeds any work we do up here. Our, as I said, our role is to just be decision-makers and know what's going on, but you have to work in your community and know what your community needs, and you need to be able to bring people together to help those in your community, whether it's Place of Hope or Junior League or the Edna W. Runner Tutorial Center or Home Safe or Grandma's House or, I mean, the list of the agencies that you and I and the rest of our board are involved with to make the community a better place. And Don, you do a great job of that, too, by the way. You know, we could actually name everybody in this room who helps with all of those agencies. Oh, my heavens, I'm crying on television. Holy heavens. My mom would say, "You shouldn't be doing that."
It's your birthday.
It's my birthday. I can cry on my birthday.
That's right.
You can cry. You can cry if you want to.[418.12][418.12](Applause) But just know that both Bob and Melissa, wherever you land, we will always be a support group for you. And my phone is, well, you know that, my phone's on 24/7, so anytime you need a hand or help or a shoulder or somebody to just vent or just talk about, please feel free to call me. And I'm just going to miss both of you, and I'm going to stop now or I'm going to keep crying. And there's a lot more to say, but I'm sure everyone else can say more. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move past the vice mayor, and we're going to go to Commissioner Kerner.
Thank you, Mayor. I think today's a joyful day in a lot of ways because you look out into this room, and it's filled with people that are excited about the future of this community. And at its core today is a transition of power through an election that has occurred fairly and in democratic fashion, and that's the essence of America. And so today's a very special day in that regard. With regards to my colleagues and my friends, Mayor Weinroth, we've had our private battles and our public battles, but we've always worked together in the interests of our districts and our communities. And I know that we leave today in these formal positions as friends and colleagues, and I've enjoyed working with you. I've enjoyed serving under you as you've led this county through the last year, and I commend you on a job well done, sir. And I know the future will be bright for you.
Thank you.
Melissa, Commissioner McKinley, we go way back. We fought our battles, too, but mostly we've been fighting battles together on behalf of our community. And I've always found you to be so thoughtful, so passionate. In a lot of ways, there's a little relief that you're leaving the commission because you work so damn hard, and you never stop working. And some people are like, "Well, why don't you work as hard as Commissioner McKinley?" And it's a good question.[562.54][562.54](Laughter) But you take on this position like you take on your life, and that's with the full force and weight of your intelligence and your compassion and your love for the people of this community. And I'm excited for your future, and it's been an honor to serve with both of you. And thank you for that privilege.
Okay, Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you, Mayor. And my book will always be the mayor. You know, there was someone here who sat in this seat who was always the commish. Now we have the man who will always be our mayor. Thank you for your service, Bob. You and I have known each other just a couple of years, right?
Couple of years.
And I've seen you in many, many positions of leadership, whether it was with the Board of Governors, the Florida Bar, or in City Council of Boca Raton. You've always been exceptional. You've always been a lot of light. You walk in a room, there's color and light, and it's been beautiful. So I know that you will go on in your life of service because that's your middle name. And Melissa, my goodness, you may not remember, but I met you the first time at a legislative delegation meeting when this young, beautiful blonde girl came up to me and said, "I want to do service. I want to get some political position in my life where I can serve our community." That was you many years ago. And from then, you went on, and you served as a wonderful advocate for county issues in the Florida Legislature, the Florida House, the Florida Senate, and now you're not really at a culmination. You're just beginning. You're just beginning your journey of service. And in a way, this is, the county commission is a way where people who want to can step up and have a direct voice in their community, and this is what you have done. You have more institutional knowledge about the county and the many ways that the county works than anybody I know, except to the lady sitting next to me. And I've been very blessed to sit next to her because I've gotten a lot of information. But I couldn't understand why these Kleenex boxes were here. Now I know, Marina, Moreno. Now I know. But if there is any tears or tears of joy, because we have gotten to know you again, Melissa McKinley, Commissioner McKinley, a great leader that we will see more and more of as the years go by, and you, Mayor Weinroth, we're going to see more and more of you as the years go by, and I look forward to that. So it's a period of transition, and as government is, people step into it as citizens, we become community leaders, and we step outside as citizen leaders, and that is what both of you are. It has been a joy and a pleasure to work with you, and I look forward to many more years of working with you. I'm going to hold on to this box. There might be serious things later on, but thank you for your service, and thank you for your smiling face all the time, Melissa, you've always been there for me. And thank you, Bob, for lighting up the room and your leadership here. God bless. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And before I recognize our next commissioner up here, I'm going to recognize two former commissioners out there. I see Commissioner Abrams has joined us, my immediate predecessor. Great to see you, Steve. And I see Commissioner Karen Marcus is here. Great to see you, too, Karen. And of course, Hal Valaschek. It's great to see you back again from District One. So we have a little bit of the new. We have our two new commissioners who will be introduced in a few minutes, and we have the former and soon-to-be former up here. So I'm going to now introduce Commissioner Bernard. We're going to give Commissioner McKinley a little more time to compose herself over there. Commissioner Bernard.
This isn't going to help.[821.12][821.12](Laughter) I've had the chance of serving with Mayor Weinroth for the past four years. I think we've fought a lot during the four years, but your awareness in terms of economic development for moving Palm Beach County forward, transportation, I look forward to working with you for us to continue to move Palm Beach County in terms of economic development and transportation. But I'm standing here for something else because I have the opportunity of presenting to Commissioner McKinley. Commissioner McKinley, during your tenure on the Board of County Commissioners, you have been a force for the residents of our community. You took on some of the toughest issues and became a champion for women, children, and families. When we saw drug addiction taking a toll on so many lives in our county, you spearheaded the efforts to create the first addiction stabilization facility. When victims of sexual assault did not have consistent location to go in our community, you spearheaded efforts to create the Butterfly House. When firefighters needed protections in their fights against cancer, you pushed Palm Beach County to be the first government to provide cancer coverage protections in Florida. You have been a leading voice in the legislative process at both the state and national level in the areas of transportation and agriculture, and ascended to the highest levels in our state association by serving as the president of the Florida Association of Counties. With someone having such a diverse array of accomplishments in public life, the appropriate way to honor you has proven difficult. But you, like me, recognize the importance of assisting those who needed an opportunity to find a place to transition with a good roof over their heads and resources to ensure their success. You spearheaded the creation of the Lake Village at the Glades in Pahokee, a 42-unit apartment complex that works in tandem with the Belglade Assessment Center to provide those in need an adequate sheltering alternative. It is for this reason that I make a motion to rename that facility Melissa's Place, As you're looking at the slide on the screen, that will show a rendition of the new name. Further, I propose a plaque to be installed at the building entrance that says the following: Melissa McKinley, Melissa's Place, Lake Village at the Glades, Palm Beach County Commissioner from 2014 through 2022. Her tireless and enduring advocacy for the residents of the Glades during her tenure on the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners resulted in the establishment of this facility that will provide shelter for those in need, and her many years of advocacy for women, children, and families will endure in the lives of so many she has touched. Mr. Mayor, I had made a motion, so if I can get a second?
I'll stand there.
I have a second by Commissioner Moreno. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed? Before I leave the dais, I hope that we can have one more picture together with Commissioner McKinley. Okay. Okay, Commissioner Bernard, is that the conclusion of your remarks?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor, or Vice Weiss, as we have affectionately called you. It is now time for you to say your remarks.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor, and to my fellow commissioners. You know, as has been mentioned today, that we are really, we've come together with a transition. We're going to be saying goodbye to some colleagues. We're saying hello to some new colleagues. So I'm going to focus my remarks on the ones we're saying goodbye to today. Bob, you and I go back to when, years ago, when I remember you first ran for public office as the property appraiser and went to a number of your events, met you, and were always, you know, when I first met you, the kindness, the openness, and the willingness to, you know, spend time with me was something I appreciated. And I remember going to one of your first fundraisers and being a part of that. Never did I ever imagine that I was going to serve in public office with you. I have to say, you know, we came in together four years ago, sort of learning the ropes at the same time, and I appreciate your support and your help in making that transition. But I also will say, we disagreed vehemently, more times than I can count, but we did it in a way that, you know, was respectful, and that I will always treasure. And we were able to move past our disagreements because we were both trying to do what was in the best for our community. And I knew that's where you were coming from, so it never mattered. And Melissa, you and I go back a long ways as well. Long before you were in public office and still as a legislative assistant here in the county, as I think when we first met, your drive was always evident, your ability to take people's difficulties, their lives, and make it a part of your own because you lived the issues that you've advocated for. And that's something that you taught me that I'll carry with me for the rest of my life. I couldn't imagine anybody working harder. I think that, you know, as you move forward into your next role, you know, and we've had conversations, I've had the opportunity to work in the private sector probably longer than I should have, but, you know, I think there are so many opportunities and adventures that await you, and I just look forward to learning about your future successes. So before I go on with this presentation, I have two small presentations for the two of you. I didn't know, protocol-wise, but I think it was important. So I have two parting gifts.
These are consolation prizes?
Okay, we can call them that. So, Bob, I'm going to deliver these bags.
Is it wine?
Thank you, thank you.
Bob, if you don't mind, if you want to, go ahead. This is something special for you. There are socks.
All right, here we go.
Very bright socks, and they all have cats on them.[1424.42][1424.42](Laughter) So something to remember our time together. And Melissa, I understand that you were dressed up a few weeks ago, and I want to make sure as you go through the world, everybody knows who they're dealing with as you move forward.
Rebecca must have wrapped this.
She did. This was a trick?
Yeah, this is a trick.[1462.24][1462.24](Laughter)
Of course, it's from TikTok.
There we go.
Slide open, doesn't it?
No, it's not.
Just rip it open.
We're getting there.
I showed you how cool it is, but I guess the TikTok thing...
While they're working on that, Sally, I'm going to apologize to you for not recognizing you before.
And we have a Wonder Woman license plate frame, so everybody knows what they're dealing So, you're very welcome. Mayor Weinroth, I want to thank you for your years of public service, both as a member of the Boca Raton City Council and Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners. There is no doubt that you have been a strong voice for regionalism, collaboration, and communication, again, among so many stakeholders in our community. It was clear from the first day you joined me as a member of our board, you were focused on, and your interest lied squarely in ensuring that our residents had choices and options for transportation and transit and a transit network in our community. You had previously served as a member of the Chair of the Boca Raton Airport Authority, the Palm Trans Service Board, respectively. You continued and rose the rank of the Chair of the Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency, and you worked with our colleagues to the north on the Treasure Coast Planning Council, and you took your talents nationwide as a member of the NACO Transportation Steering Committee. Transportation has been your passion, and you've always sought to push for and support new innovations, whether it was additional Sprite Line stations, more EV charging stations, transit on-demand services, interoperability of Palm Trans fare cards, our complete streets, Vision Zero. Your signature is on every one of these initiatives. It is for that, this reason, that I make a motion to name the Palm Trans Service Board Meeting Room at Palm Trans Delray Beach Facility the Robert S. Weinroth Boardroom. A picture of the boardroom can be, you can see it on the slide. Further, I move that a plaque be affixed to the outside of the boardroom to say the following, as seen on two slides above. Robert S. Weinroth Boardroom, Palm Beach County Commissioner, 2018 to 2022, Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners, Mayor, Palm Beach County Transportation Planning Agency Chairman, Palm Trans Service Board Chairman. His commitment to transportation needs of the residents of Palm Beach County has left a mark on its growing transit network, and his time in public office captured the spirit of innovation and travel through his advocacy for alternatives to private passenger vehicle transport.
I have a motion by the vice mayor. I have a second by Commissioner Moreno. All in favor? All opposed? Show that it's been approved unanimously. All right, it's that time. Commis... Would you like to go first? Do you have something over there you'd like to say, county administrator? Really? I mean, just a little bit? Should we give her some time?
Absolutely.
All right, all right. The chair has been told that the county administrator is going to be recognized.
I think we have video. Mayors.
All right, you lost your turn.
Here we go.
I, Robert Weinroth, solemnly swear, do solemnly swear, perform the duties, perform the duties...
Of county commissioner.
Of county commissioner.
Of Palm Beach County.
Of Palm Beach County.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Godspeed to you, sir.[1766.51][1766.51](Applause)
It's great to look around this room and see how many people have come out today on this beautiful day, and it's important that this community join together in this commemoration today.
We're celebrating the sixth running of the Boca Raton Ball, and it's a wonderful event. You know, it's great for Boca, and it's great for Palm Beach County.
And this is going to be a place where our residents are going to be able to come and do their business. There's going to be 40... There's going to be 46,000 square feet of parking.
So today, we're here right outside of Boca Raton.
So tell me a little bit about the activities that someone can get involved in here.
This is a pretty comprehensive project. What's it costing?
It's a pretty sizable project, Mayor, it's about $4.3 million.
And I think now we've stepped back, especially in the urban core, where we want people to get out and enjoy. And so we're making more of an attempt to make our roads and streets and sidewalks more friendly to pedestrians.
We commend you for your lifelong commitment for helping others. And he said to me as he came up here, do I really only have three minutes? I said, for you, four. Anyway, this is for you, and thank you so much for everything you do for our community. Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. All right, now it's time for our incident commander to give us the real poop.
Today, we are going to talk about building safety, because it's something we take for granted. But obviously, after Champlain Towers, we understand that we need these people in our employ to be out there, making sure that every one of our buildings remains safe.
Let's be safe out there. Let's make sure that we get through the storm safely, and again, keep an eye on your neighbors.
This is really a beautiful day, and it's really important that we do what we're going to do today, which is keep these beaches clean. I mean, we are so lucky to live here in paradise.
And I think we are going to see a very good session as far as appropriations.
Mayor, we appreciate you being up here.
I have loved this job, and I'm going to miss it, but I thank you very much for the opportunity to serve.
Mayor Robert S. Weinroth. On behalf of staff and the residents of the county, we want to thank you for your leadership and commitment. During your term, you served two years as Vice Mayor, and then your final year as Mayor. You led us through two hurricanes in the last three months. You have led us through some real, in your words, poop. I am grateful for your steadfast approach to our meetings and countless hours of agenda review. Your leadership has been unwavering. Before becoming County Commissioners, you served on the county's Palm Tran Advisory Board, as previously stated. Once becoming a Commissioner, you remained committed to improving transportation in our county. One of the largest counties east of the Mississippi River. Very diverse. Under your leadership, our transit system has continued to evolve through system improvements to meet the ever-changing need of our riders. You were the leader in implementing the pilot EV charges, and I have proof, which we will remain diligently, or I should say diligent, in expanding the EV, EV program. You chaired the county's transportation planning organization. Yes, I can vision your tunnel just west of Tamaran Avenue heading east to Quadrille, with a park on the upper section of Okeechobee Road. Yes, vision. However, you also served the residents of the county by attending our state Florida Association of County meetings. You served on the Transportation Steering Committee, as well as the Community and Urban Affairs Committee of NACO. Just a few accomplishments in your four years. I personally want to thank you for the shoes and the formal jacket. Simply outstanding. Mayor, we would like to show staff appreciation by giving you a collage of pictures and a gift as our outgoing mayor, and thank you for the years of service. Remember, you will always be a member of Team PBC. I kept it together. Moving on, our next video.
The duties of County Commissioner of Palm Beach County. The office on which I am now about to enter. So help me God. Congratulations.
If I had to describe Commissioner Melissa McKinley in three words, it would be fierce. Palm Beach County does it better than any other county in the state of Florida.
Inspiring.
We are also declaring August 31st, 2022, is International Overdose Awareness Day. You guys are heroes in this county, and I've loved working with you.
This is a passion project for her, and we would not be here if not for her advocacy and her dedication to addiction treatment in Palm Beach County.
God bless you all. In, in my last 85 days, this is huge. When somebody asks for assistance, she is there 100%. And whether it's out in the Glades, where a mom is contacting our office because there's- I had a cockroach infestation in his ear, and had to have surgery to have them removed. And I reached out to Senator Rubio, and we worked together with the agencies to bring in a new management company, and they're renovating all of those units over there.
She's able to identify an issue that needs to be solved right away. She gathers everybody instantly. She's able to figure out who needs to be brought forth, like a general, and is able to get results.
I just had a really great meeting with the Attorney General Pam Bondi on our opioid crisis. Everything, you know, everyone's listening to us. It's good to be up here and be first side of the deal.
Good morning, I'm Melissa McKinley, I'm the Mayor of Palm Beach County, and right now, I'm in my favorite place at the courthouse on the outside. To be able to be up here and have this be one of my swan song presentations, it's just incredibly honoring.
Thank you for all that you've done for District Six, for the entire, and I can speak for the entire Glades community. Thank you so much for everything, and just keep being who you are.
This side of the road is his district, and that side of the road is my district. So we're telling each other to stay in your lane. Ha, no pun intended.
The friendships and the partnerships that we've been able to form through that association work are something I'll carry with me forever. Thank you for letting me be part of your, your sisterhood and your, your special club of past presidents of the association.
The cheers to eight great years. And let's take a little bite of that.
On behalf of the entire Palm Beach County community. Thank you, Commissioner McKinley.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley.
Commissioner Melissa McKinley, on behalf of staff and the residents of Palm Beach County, we want to thank you for your fierce leadership and dedication over the last eight years as a Commissioner. However, you began your service with Team PBC as staff at the Office of Legislative Delegation. Todd identified your unique skill sets and utilized them in supporting the lobbying efforts of the county. You did an excellent job as part of the delegation's office. You soon moved on to become one of the bosses as a County Commissioner. We reversed roles. It has been a ride as we accomplished some innovative goals and programs. Examples, creation of the Substance Use Office Advisory Committee, plan of their plan approval and MAT facilities with the healthcare district to address opioid, crack, cocaine, MAT and other substance use. Free needle exchange, development of a non-congregate living facility in the Glades to support our homeless population. Instrumental in creating a partnership with the Orange Bowl NFL to overhaul Pioneer Park. Improving housing conditions, as stated earlier in the Housing Authority, properties in the Glades, and championing women and children protection. Just to cite a few accomplishments. Also, you left your stamp at the state level as you served FAT committees and ultimately became the President of FAT, Florida Association of Counties. You didn't stop there, you served on the National Committees for NACO. With, you achieved all of this while still holding down the most important job, and that's being a mother to Annika, Brady and Macy. Commissioner McKinley, we would like to show staff appreciation by giving you a collage of pictures and a gift to remember Team PBC. Thank you for your years of service, and yes, you will always be a member of Team PBC. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm looking at the agenda. It said that staff comments came after Commissioner comments, so you're, we'll have to amend the agenda. Okay. Well, Commissioner McKinley, your, your box of tissues is over there, so it's time. Senator, would you like to say something before Commissioner McKinley?
You got it in your notes, okay. No, he's sending me first. First of all, Sarah, I, I'm leaving the box of tissues for you, I brought my own. Yeah, I guess I, I want to start off with two things. First, a point of personal privilege, if you don't mind. I mean, what are you going to do, throw me off the board? You know, I got my start here in 2010, in the Legislative Affairs Office, so it's only duly appropriate that I introduce to you the new Legislative Affairs Director, whom we will all be working with, whether we're in public office or on the private side. Casey Denny, could you stand up? This is our new Legislative Affairs Director. We're very excited to bring her back from Tallahassee, where she's been working in a private firm, but before that, she worked for Senator Lori Berman. And I probably shouldn't say this on the record, but for those of you that are going to be working in this building, she makes a really great Cuban coffee. So hit her up for her skills about 2 o'clock in the afternoon, you won't regret it. I'm gonna try not to look over there, because my dad is sitting there. So. This is hard. You know, I moved to Palm Beach County in 2004, and I knew one person when I moved here. I knew Glenn Merchant. I knew Glenn from college, because I dated his roommate. And so he, he was a wonderful friend. But when we moved here, we moved here because Patricia LaBeau and Cliff Hertz recruited my former husband to come work at their law firm. So it's all Cliff's fault. And five years later, I ended up divorced, with no job, losing my house, and a seven-year-old, an eight-year-old, and a 10-year-old. So yes, Commissioner Weiss, when you say I've lived these issues, I've lived these issues. Now, the funny story is, Senator, well, she was councilwoman at the time, Lizbeth Benacristo, she gave me my first political appointment in Palm Beach County, when she was on the Village of Wellington Council, she appointed me to the Education Advisory Board. And so she became a really good friend, and we would meet for a morning coffee and end up still being at the same place having lunch. We spent hours and hours talking, I was sitting at the table with her when she decided to run for the State Senate. We became really great friends. And so when I got divorced and needed a job, she introduced me to Tom Rooney. And Tom Rooney introduced me to his district director at the time, Stephen Layton. And so Stephen became my first job interview. He had no job in the office, he just wanted to drive me up to Stewart and sit through a job interview in a suit that I hadn't worn in eight years. And he said, I don't have a job here, but I might help you find one. And he called about the same day that Michelle McGovern from Senator Nelson's office called with a job offer after I stalked her at a luncheon and gave her my resume. But the funny story is, is so Stephen calls me, and he said, I think I found a job for you, Michael Barnett, you'll laugh at this one, Joe Negron needs a fundraiser. I ended up going with Senator Nelson's office, and Senator Negron and I remained friends, but that was how I got my start. I worked for Senator Nelson with Michelle here in the regional office. A year later, she came back from the office, or came back to the office one day from lunch, and she said, you need to pack up your office, you're leaving. And I thought, oh, good Lord, what did I do? She also told me it was going to be quiet, and then about two months into office, this little thing known as the Affordable Care Act came up for debate. And I learned my patient's skills during that debate. But she said the county has a position, and they want to interview for it. They want you to interview for it. And so I went over and I interviewed with Todd Bonlaren and Ed Chase. And one of the questions they asked me was, do you have a messy desk or a clean desk? And I, I learned shortly thereafter what they meant by that. Todd had a very messy desk, and Ed had a very clean desk. My response was, I have piles, neat piles on my, on my desk, but I know where everything is. And so I started to work for Todd. Ed left shortly thereafter, and about six months later, this woman named Rachel Andress came into the office. Funny story is, she's like now is like a sister to me, but at the time, I told Todd I, I didn't think she was the best candidate for the job. So she knows this, she knows this. And those two became two of my, my very best friends, and have walked through some very, very difficult times in my life, finalizing of my divorce, you know, watching my Florida law change, and watching my child support get cut in half, and having a complete meltdown in my office, or in my little cubicle. And Todd called me into his office, and he just quietly closed the door and let me cry for 30 minutes, and I could go back out and do my job. But they, that's why they became family. And then a few years later, I'm, you know, happily working in the office, and I get a call from Fred Angelo. Freddie, are you in here? I thought I saw you. And Freddie Angelo said, hey, so your county commission seat's opening up, why don't you run for it? And I had a few select words from him that I can't say, because it'll get bleeped out. But ultimately, I, I gave it some consideration. And the first people I called to ask them their opinion, one's sitting right next to me, Senator Abruzzo, Senator Latvalla, Senator Clemens, Senator Benacristo, our state attorney, Dave Ehrenberg. I called them all and asked them what they thought. And I won't tell you which one told me, county commissioner, are you sure? That's where politicians go to die. But that senator is not sitting up here. And so, you know, and, and a few folks said, that district, that's going to be a really hard district, it contains the Glades community, are you sure that's what you want to do? And I said, I can't think of any other better reason to want to run for office than to have the opportunity to represent a place where you can really make a difference. And yeah, so we did it. And it wasn't easy, and there's a lot of people in this room who helped me get elected. Probably the number one person in this room who helped me get elected is Drew Rayburn and the firefighters. And I made a promise that we would make sure that firefighters from that point forward were safe and had all of the equipment and all of the tools and the latest medical evidence followed, and how we built stations and put things in stations and kept your equipment to prevent you from getting cancer, and, and working together on that contract and getting that cancer presumption passed. That was a lot of work. But Drew, not only did you help me get elected, but you helped my family too. Drew served as a mentor to my son in the Fire Rescue Cadet Program- Drew served as a mentor to my son in the Fire Rescue Cadet Program for three and a half years. And for those of you single parents who have a teenage son, you know how important it is that they have mentors in their life outside of the family. And Drew, you served in that role, so thank you for everything. I know I'm going to ramble. I should have written notes. I told my dad I was going to write notes, and I never got around to doing it. So I'm just going to ramble. My staff, you know, I want to thank Kelly and Joseph and Lisa for everything that you've done. Kelly works 14 hours a day. You know, Joseph is a heck of a writer. Lisa, everyone knows who she is in the Glades. She quietly works behind the scenes. When we had to condemn a housing complex, she was the one that was making sure that everybody had a safe place to go. And it's an incredible team, and there's one of our team members who is watching on TV because she already texted me. Johnny Easton, thank you for letting me be a voice for your family. Thank you for letting me be a voice for Tasha and for pushing this entire county harder than it had ever been pushed before to respond to the opioid epidemic that now encompasses all sorts of substances. But thank you for that, Johnny. That's something I'll never forget, you allowing me to do. Wendy Tippett, I see her sitting there. She is an angel. If you ever have somebody who's homeless in this county, she's the one making sure that they're placed. I'm looking at this plaque here that says Melissa's Place. And Wendy, that happened a lot because of you. I also want to say that you're lucky. I was just out in the Glades yesterday, and staff will tell you that I randomly just drive around my district and find things. I sent a picture to the mayor yesterday and told them to take care of something out in Belgrade. But I'm glad I didn't drive up to Pahokee yesterday and see this and ruin the surprise. It's very humbling. Our legislative delegation, thank you for letting me be your 14th member all of these years. Our lobby team, they're the best in the state of Florida. Sarah and I had the opportunity to drive around the Glades, and I talked about the stuff that I did. And every one of us, I told her, every one of us up here has a special niche, something that we care about, something that we think we're good at. Y'all might have different opinions. But working with our Legislative Affairs Office and working with our delegation was my niche. And my lobby team made us look really good and helped us get a lot accomplished. Because when you represent a district this big and this diverse, you can't do it on county resources alone. It took that partnership with the state and with our friends in federal office on both sides of the aisle. Everything obviously required Republican partnership in Tallahassee, and over the years in Washington, that's changed. But we've worked really well with everybody on both sides of the aisle, and I'm really proud of that. Kelly Smallridge, that's how we got the nickname Wonder Woman. I know Kelly was here. I'm not sure if she still is. Are you still here? Kelly, I told her while I was in office, she was not allowed to leave the Business Development Board, and she said, "Girl, I promise you, I'm not leaving the Business Development Board. We've got a lot of work to do in the Glades." And Kelly helped us, along with Sherri Howard in the Economic Sustainability Team here in the county, helped us land the two single largest economic development projects in the Glades in over a quarter of a century. So thank you, Kelly. You are the Wonder Woman, and you deserve a plaque and a cape, and we'll go out there and do it together. I know I'm going to forget a whole lot of people here. So let me just say, we've started a lot of good projects. We've started a wonderful conversation on farmworker and rural housing. We've started a wonderful conversation on protecting our first responders. We have started an unprecedented conversation on how to respond to the opioid epidemic and the drug use epidemic. Everybody says, "What are you, you're going to run for higher office?" This is the higher office. The closest you are to the constituents you serve, the higher the office you hold. And there's a lot of criticism that comes with this office. You are in the spotlight. Your family gets beat up. I have more than once talked to my dad off the ledge from responding to Facebook comments. I think the last eight years have been harder on him and harder on my family than it has been on me. But you get to make a difference in the lives of the people that you serve. Sarah, this is a huge job, and I am on the record telling you that I am here to help you anytime you have questions. I will have certain prohibitions, I'm sure, at some point for two years, but as much as I can help you and help your staff, we are here for you to help you make that transition and to help you throughout your term in office. And I just, final thank yous, Todd and Rachel, thank you for being my Palm Beach County family. You know, for those of you that don't know, 2020 was a hell of a year, probably the hardest year I've ever had to serve in office. It was personally devastating. It was professionally extremely difficult. And it was so hard because my kids weren't all here nearby. They lost their stepbrother to an overdose, you know, never. It was just difficult, but never think you know what's going on entirely behind an elected official's office or in their personal life. We are not perfect. We're human, and we're doing the best we can up here. But I wouldn't have been able to get through the last eight years without my dad. Sorry. I'm going to pull a Marco. Without my father and my stepmother and my little sister. In 2020, brought us baby Luca, and he's watching. Hi, Luca. 2020 brought me my goddaughter. You know, God bless my mother and my grandmother who are watching from heaven, who I lost while I was serving in office. But their angel wings, I would not have been able to get through the last eight years without those wings. But the most important people in my life are on a plane right now to North Carolina to see their dad for Thanksgiving. But it's Brady, Macy, and Annie, who have had their own experiences in the public eye. And as I joked, one of them no longer has a Twitter account. But I am so proud of them. They were eight, nine, and 11 when I started with Palm Beach County. They are 21, 22, and 24 now. One is training to be a world-class chef in Joey Abruzzo's hometown of Chicago. One is interning for a local sheriff in Florida, and will be heading into the Law Enforcement Academy, so I'll be a Blue Line family come the end of next year. And one of them is studying, ironically, communications in conflict. Mom, I'm never going to go into politics. I'm like, oh. They were my inspiration. Families like theirs were my inspiration. The only thing I ever wanted to do was to help create an environment in our county where moms who were facing life like I was at that time in 2009 had opportunities before them to take care of their families and make life better for their kids. So with that, thank you. It's been an honor to serve.
Senator, did you want to make a couple of comments before I go?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I walk into my remarks and I temporarily become mayor, I got it covered. I'll come back.
Okay. So I remember sitting there four years ago saying, "When are these people getting off the damn dais so I can get up there?" I mean, really. It's 10:30. There's two people sitting here saying, "I want to get up there. I want to get up there." So I'm going to be a little short, but sweet. This has been really the job of a lifetime. This is really the icing on the cake of public service that I cannot tell you how honored I am to have had the opportunity to serve the people of Palm Beach County, and more so that my colleagues saw fit to make me mayor this year and allow me to be the spokesperson of the county. Couple of hurricanes. I tried not to go in front of the EOC. I swore I was not going to do it, but there were plans that I had no control over. This is a labor of love. Everybody who's here, whether they're up here or alumni who are out there in the crowd, you know that this is something that is unique in public service. It's unique because we are so close to the people that most of the time when there's something contentious, every one of those seats is full, and everybody is going to give us three minutes of their attention, and they want us to know what they think. We can't hide up in Tallahassee. We can't hide up in DC. We're right here in the community. And I learned that when I was in the city of Boca Raton, because people would come out in the evening and tell us what they thought. We gave them five minutes there. Thank God, it's only three here. But this really is the body that touches the people. This is the body that makes a lot of decisions, and we learned during the pandemic, some decisions that some people didn't find to be to their liking, and that's certainly understandable. But at the end of the day, everybody sitting up here, whether it's staff or whether it's elected officials, did the best we could under the circumstances we were under, under the information that we had before us. And to say today that maybe we would have done something a little differently, maybe would have tweaked it a little bit, maybe we would have been a little bit lighter in the touch, or maybe we'd have made some other plans, is certainly appropriate. But at the time, every one of us felt that this was the thing we needed to do to keep everybody safe. And thank God, we made it through the pandemic, and now it's endemic. It'll be there for years to come, and hopefully, most of you are going to get your vaccinations and not say that you don't need them. You can't be up here without a staff of people who are willing to make you look good. And my first member of the staff who I met, Lucia Bonavita, has now gone through this four times. She was here for Mary McCarty. She was here for Steve Abram. She's been here for me now, and she is going to be the backbone, I'm sure, of the office for Commissioner Woodward. And I'm sure, Marcy, you will realize that this is someone that you need to treasure because she knows where the dead bodies are. And she could tell you how they got there. Seriously, I am so blessed to have had Lucia for the last four years to help me work through a lot of the issues here in the county. Four years, eight years, it really is too short to do the job that you have elected us to do. This is a job that, and I've said it at a previous meeting, probably should be at least 12 years, like they do in Broward. Because a lot of the projects we get involved in take longer than four, eight, or 12 years. But I thank Lucia for being there to help me through issues where I needed to learn some historical perspective. I thank Yalen and Caitlin for being right there behind her, making sure that my social profile was up there and that people knew what we were doing and made sure that we were doing the people's business. And I am so proud of that office. And again, Commissioner-elect Woodward, I'm glad that you're keeping all three of them on because I think that they are going to serve you well. This, as you heard, transportation has been one of my focal points over the last four years and even before then. But it's a three-legged stool in this challenge of keeping our county at the top of its game. Transportation, economic development, and education. And Kelly, you are the princess of economic development, and I just can't believe what you were able to do during the pandemic in attracting people to our county and continue to do. And what our county has as far as economic development is really on the shoulders, pretty much, on what Kelly and the board has done at the BDB, Business Development Board. And it was my privilege to be on the executive board for the last year, and I'm going to miss that. Education, thanks to my good friend, to my left-tier Commissioner Kerner. We are going to have a beautiful new campus for UF right here in West Palm Beach in a few years, and that is going to be a game changer. That's going to be a game changer because it's going to bring the opportunity to our students to have the master's programs, the multidisciplinary master's programs that are going to be in addition to what the other universities are doing. Let's not forget FAU, my backyard, where I have FAU, and I promised them they were not going to be pushed off the map by UF. And they have, through President Fox, who has just recently departed, and others, promised that they will work tirelessly and collegially with the universities here. And I think that that is very important to our students, to our residents, that we are going to have a transportation system here that hopefully will continue to grow with our growing population, that our economic development keeps up with our need for additional good-paying jobs, and that our educational system here, our A-rated school district that we work with, it's an independently elected board, but we work collegially with them. I'm going to tell my successor and Commissioner-elect Baxter, I hope you'll respect home rule. Home rule is something that's important because, number one, we as a body hope that our friends up in Tallahassee don't try and erase us by passing legislation that takes away things that we feel should be done at the local level, at the level that's the closest to you, whether it be at the city or whether it be at the county. We feel that there are things that need to be done at this level because we, again, have the personal touch with you as our residents. And I have a light touch with my municipalities. District Four has the most municipalities, and so you're going to get to know a lot of good mayors, and they are going to be looking for your assistance, but they're also going to look for you to stay away from them when they're doing their thing. I see Richard Radcliffe here. Richard has always been a great champion for home rule and is a great liaison with our municipalities, and he certainly is a source of information for you, and I'm sure you will find him to be a great ally. As I said, this has been a great run. I would be in trouble if I didn't recognize my wife. And, you know, behind every good man is a great wife or a great husband or a great partner. And certainly Pam has been there for me, has been there cheering me on throughout my public life, and I'm looking forward to having a less public life going forward. And to be honest, I'm feeling a little sense of relief with the idea that I'm going to be moving off of the spotlight that's been on here for the last four years. And it's been a good run. I'm looking forward to whatever that next door that I've been told is opening. There's a lot of people have been telling me over the last two weeks, one door closes, the other one opens, so I'm looking for that open door. If you see it, you can point me to it. I wish my colleagues and the newest members of this board all the best. This has been my, again, my dream job, and I'm looking forward to watching you guys continue the job. Transportation certainly has been job one to me. I think that there's a lot of opportunity out there. I've mentioned at the last meeting, I'm not going to be a laborer today. I'm going to hope that this body continues in a collegial fashion. The seven of us, as you heard vice-wife say, don't always agree. Commissioner Kerner said the same thing. Commissioner Bernard said the same thing. We have had our disagreements, but we have been able to walk out of this meeting, shake hands, have coffee, go out to the hands, have coffee, go out to lunch, be friends, and not feel that somehow we had to have a line of demarcation between ourselves. I said when I was first brought up here that this was a partisan election for a nonpartisan body, and I reiterate that, notwithstanding the fact that the dynamics up here are going to be a little bit different with more Republicans than Democrats than they were before, because we never looked upon a Republican colleague as someone who was going to be isolated or someone who was not going to be listened to. All seven of us have an equal voice up here, including the mayor. I'm a spokesman for the county, but I only have one vote. So every one of us works with each other. Every one of us respects each other. And I counsel the new members of this body, come on up here, enjoy the ride, and work with your colleagues, because I think you're going to really enjoy this job. I thank you, each one of you, for allowing me to have this job. You know, we sometimes feel self-important. It comes with the job. But we're no more important than the voters that put us up here. And obviously, when the voters feel that it's time for us to go home, they let us know. So I will be going home today. So thank you very much. All right. I'm sorry, we're not doing the oath of office yet. We're still going to have some public comments. So we're going to just take on, we have two comment cards here. If you would like to speak, I'm going to ask you, we'll accept your cards for a few more minutes. If you would like to speak just on the subject that's before us right now, which is the transition and two of us stepping off the dais, then we will accept your cards. So I am going to call the Honorable Steve Wilson, the mayor from our good city of Pohoke?
Belgrade.
Belgrade. Who did that? Who did that? South Bay? Pohoke?
Mr. Mayor, while he's walking up to the microphone, before I get scolded, this is why you should write notes. I forgot to thank an extremely important partner in my district, and that's our agricultural community. If that is, and I ask that the successors in the two seats coming up here, that is the second-leading industry in Palm Beach County and probably one of the most important in the nation, because they put food on our table. It is not only an economic driver, but it's a national security issue, and they have been wonderful partners. Anytime you've reached out to the ag community in a time of need, they have been there. And they're facing tremendous challenges right now in terms of labor, in terms of fuel, in terms of fertilizer, and constant pressure on the EAA to pretty much eliminate agricultural activities in that part of the county. I ask that you continue to support them, and I just want to thank them for everything that they've helped me do over the last eight years. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a bittersweet moment for all of us. It's bittersweet because, you know, when you establish a relationship with folks throughout the years, you have a tendency you don't want to let it go. But the sweet part about it, that we live in a country where we have opportunities, and this is a great opportunity for the new incoming commissioners to be. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and to all the commissioners, Administrator Baker and your entire staff. I have with me today Representative of the City of South Bay, Mayor Joe Cowles. They called us, as you know, Batman and Robin. And if you ask, who's Batman, who's Robin? Remember, Batman was taller than Robin. The city manager throughout the Glades, Lucas Reese and Campbell. And we also have in the audience Commissioner Perez from the city of Pohoke. We're gathered here today for two reasons, and my good friend, Senator Abuso, always my man, for two reasons. One, to say to you, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your service to the goodwill of mankind. I can go on the record and say that whenever it became an issue with the Glades community that I know of, you always supported the Glades community. And with that, the Glades community would like to say thank you for that. Now, if you will allow me just to direct my attention to District Six, Commissioner McKinley. An old R&B songwriter once wrote the song, and I promise I won't try to sing it. If loving you is wrong, then we, the folks in the Glades, don't want to do right. We certainly realize that after today, we won't be able to see you as often as we would like to, but we'll see you when we can. Thank you for your integrity and honesty towards the good, the bad, and the ugly, on all the issues that came your way. And finally, we say to you, thank you for your willingness to work both day and night, traveling all over the world for the folks of Palm Beach County, to ensure that we knew about the best and that we were in a position to receive the best. Yes, the folks in the Glades call you Wonder Woman, because it's evident that you are doing ordinary things, but go beyond that. Thank you for your service. The second reason we're here is to congratulate our incoming commissioners, Commissioner Baxter and Woodward. We say to our District Six incoming commissioner, we're here in support of you. We're here to be with you. We're pleased to stand by you as we go through the conditions in the Glades community. Thank you, and God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson.
Good morning. I'm Alan Gast, 333 Southern Boulevard, West Palm Beach, 33405. I'm president of Gast Construction Group and past president of the Associated General Contractors Florida East Coast Chapter and the incoming Government Affairs Chair. Ms. Hilda Potter, our AGC FEC CEO, I'd hope to be present today to honor this day and this transition to leadership. However, she is headed out of town with her family. And if you know her, you know she's watching. So Mayor Weinroth and Commissioner McKinley, the AGC wishes to acknowledge that we truly appreciate your years of service, leadership, and your tireless time and efforts on behalf of the taxpayers of Palm Beach County, as well as your contributions to leave it a better place than when you were seated. We appreciate you always recognizing the AGC's 73-year history of being located here in Palm Beach County and our advocacy on behalf of the industry as the voice of construction. We also appreciate you having your doors open and willingness to hear all sides of an issue, even when you may have known we may not agree, and for your recognition of the important role that construction plays in Palm Beach County as an industry employer and an economic driver. And to the entire commission, County Administrator and SDAF, we would be remiss if we did not take this opportunity to acknowledge that we will be forever grateful for you working with us to ensure construction remained essential during the COVID pandemic. Mayor Weinroth, Commissioner McKinley, we truly wish you the best in your future endeavors, and much good health and happiness to you and your families in 2023 and beyond. Happy birthday, Commissioner Marino, and congratulations, Commissioner Weiss, on your reelection. And to Commissioners Alex Baxter and Woodward, you know, we congratulate you as you take on your roles, new roles here shortly. We look forward to continuing to be the industry resource of all things related to construction and to working with you and the new commission staff in the coming years as it relates to our industry. So on behalf of all of us at the AGC Florida East Coast Chapter, our board, our staff, and our members, we truly thank you, and thank you all so much.
Thank you very much. Melissa McEwen.
Good morning, Mayor. Commissioners. Melissa McEwen, 1270 Southeast 14th Court, Deerfield. I just wanted to say thank you to the board, and I didn't know today was going to be so But you guys really make this job your life and listen to us up here. And I wish you both the best, and thank you for that.
Thank you. We appreciate that. All right. That appears to be all the comments from the public. Senator, would you like to be recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe this is the, this is...
Not yet.
Not yet?
I will adjourn this meeting, and then we will resume with the clerk of court to run the next meeting to help the reorganization. Thank you, everybody.
Good morning, members of the board of the county commissioners, County Administrator Baker, county staff and residents of Palm Beach County. It is my privilege to call the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners, November 22, 2022, reorganizational meeting to order. I am Joseph Abruzzo, your Clerk of the Circuit Court and Comptroller for Palm Beach County. As clerk, one of my official duties include presiding over the county commission meeting prior to the election of our new county mayor. Once the person is selected, the new mayor will preside over the rest of this morning's agenda. I welcome all of you, especially our two new commissioners, Marcy Woodward, representing her constituents in District Four, and Sarah Baxter, representing her constituents in I would also like to congratulate Vice Mayor Greg Weiss on his successful reelection to represent his constituents of District Two. On behalf of myself and my team of clerks in our office, we look forward to working with you in the years ahead. I'd also like to extend my best wishes to our two outgoing commissioners, Mayor Robert Weinroth. And Bob, in that tagline where it said Weinroth on the move, I couldn't think of any better way to describe you. There hasn't been a community meeting, North or South County, that I haven't been at in the past four years that you haven't been at. It is really remarkable, and that just shows your commitment to the constituents and always being out in the community, making sure your pulse is with the people. And thank God we never had voting issues, but I appreciate your service, and I'm proud to call you a dear friend. To Commissioner McKinley, if you are, I was probably one of the first to see your tenacity in an elected official role when I was 26 or 27. Many of you probably do not know this, but Melissa was very involved in her HOA, and she had a candidate's form. And Dave Ehrenberg warned me. He said, "When you go, you have to really study up on your material, because she is going to grill you." And you probably were only in town like two or three years at the time, and you did just that. And I could tell you, I was from that experience. I always wanted to be the first one for you publicly as an elected official when you ran for office, and I will always be there for you as a dear friend. And I'll miss you up here, but we stay in touch, and we're still going to debate about Miami Hurricane and FSU football. Thank you both for your commitment to public service, that shows through and through. We will now begin the oaths of office. I would now like to invite the Honorable Judge Louis Delgado to join us and administer the oath of office for Marcy Woodward.
Repeat after me. I do solemnly affirm...
I do solemnly affirm...
That I am a citizen of the United States of America...
That I am a citizen of the United States of America...
And I will support, protect, and defend...
And I will support, protect, and defend...
The constitutions and governments of the United States and State of Florida...
One more time?
The constitutions and governments of the United States and State of Florida...
The constitutions and governments of the United States and Florida...
And that I am duly qualified...
And that I am duly qualified...
To hold office under the Constitution...
To hold office under the Constitution...
And that I will faithfully perform...
And that I will faithfully perform...
The duties of County Commissioner of Palm Beach County...
The duties of Palm Beach County Commissioner.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Commissioner. Thank you, Your Honor. Next, it is my privilege to administer the oath of office for Greg Weiss and Sarah Baxter. I will administer the oaths of office in order of commissioned districts. Commissioner Weiss of District Two will be first. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support...
I do solemnly swear that I will support...
Protect and defend...
Protect and defend...
The Constitution and government of the United States...
The Constitution and government of the United States...
And of the State of Florida...
And of the State of Florida...
That I am duly qualified to hold office...
That I am duly qualified to hold office...
Under the Constitution of the State...
Under the Constitution of the State...
And that I will well and faithfully perform...
That I will well and faithfully perform...
The duties of County Commissioner...
The duties of County Commissioner...
Of Palm Beach County...
Of Palm Beach County...
The office of which I am now about to enter...
The office of which I am now about to enter...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm, I'm sorry, I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
That I will support, protect...
That I will support and protect...
And defend the Constitution...
And defend the Constitution...
And government of the United States...
And government of the United States...
And of the State of Florida...
And of the State of Florida...
That I am duly qualified...
That I am duly qualified...
To hold office...
To hold office...
Under the Constitution of the State...
Of the Constitution of the State...
And that I will well and faithfully perform...
That I will well and faithfully perform...
The duties of County Commissioner...
The duties of County Commissioner...
Of Palm Beach County...
Of Palm Beach County...
The office of which I am now about to enter...
The office of by which now I'm about to enter...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to the new commissioners, and can our new board please be seated? Once again, congratulations. Is there a motion to adopt an agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? The motion passes seven to zero.
The motion passes seven to zero. We are now moving to the election of our new mayor. Are there any nominations for mayor?
Mr. Clerk, I'd like to make a motion.
Commissioner Sacks is recognized.
That's all right.
Because she got to me first before the meeting.
Thank you, Senator. I'd like to make a motion at this time to nominate Commissioner Greg Weiss as mayor of Palm Beach County Commission.
Commissioner Bernard, if you'd like...
A second is not needed, Mr. Clerk.
I'm aware of it. I'm breaking protocol in case... The nominations... Any other nominations? The nominations are closed. Congratulations, Mayor Weiss. Mayor Weiss, I would now pass the gavel to you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So would now, moving on, would like to ask if there are any nominations for Vice Mayor. I think Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Sacks as the Vice Mayor.
We have a nomination for Commissioner Sacks as Vice Mayor. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, nominations are closed. We have a vote now for Commissioner Sacks as Vice Mayor, Palm Beach County. All in favor? All opposed? That passes unanimously. Congratulations. So before we move forward with the actual reorganization of the dais and moving on with our meeting, we do have an opportunity for comments and I would invite our newest commissioners if they would like to make comments to the public at this time. Yep, okay. So we'll start with you, Commissioner Woodward, since you're in District Four.
Hello. Thank you, everyone, all in attendance right now. My name is Marcy Woodward. I'd like to thank all of my supporters who came up here today, everyone who worked on my campaign. Proof that a citizen does have a place in local government. I'd like to thank everyone that encouraged me and knocked doors for me and got the message out. I hope to make you all very proud. Everyone here, Commissioner Weinroth, or Mayor Weinroth, thank you for a smooth transition. And for our staff, Lucia, Caitlin, Yalen have been available for me this entire past week, working to get me up to speed on a litany of issues that are facing me immediately. Thank you very much for that. And everyone up here for the warm welcome. And Ms. Baker with your staff. Everyone has worked very hard to get me closer to where I need to be coming up in the next few weeks. And most of all, I'd like to thank the voters of District Four for taking a chance on a citizen candidate who is stepping into public office for the first time. I know there's a learning curve and everyone's promised to help me get where I need to be. And everyone up here has been very gracious. And I hope to make you all very proud as well. I know that I aim to represent you the way I want to be represented myself. So thank you.
Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
So thank you. Thank you, everyone. This is the honor, honor of a lifetime, to be able to serve and help people and to accomplish things in Palm Beach County. But I have to say, none of this would be possible if it wasn't for my Jesus God, who stood by me every step when I felt alone, when I felt unsupported. And only second to that was my husband, who picked up the slack when I needed him the most, especially with our kids, you name it. It has just been one of those rides that has well paid off because I get to do what I want to do and that is to serve the people, help the community, just do whatever we can to support small business. When I just happened to be at our business and looked around just yesterday, I couldn't believe that's where it all started. It's where I made the decision, this is what I wanted to do. And that was who I wanted to help. I have had so much support. I don't think that I would even be able to get through all of those names. But just my family in general, every one of my children, Christian, Logan, Liam, my dad, my stepmom, everyone, aunts, uncles here today to support me. My REC family has been amazing. My Wellington Chambers family has been just absolutely phenomenal. I have met the most amazing people. My FNGLA family, love them. They just, the biggest supporters ever. So, so many and too many to name that have just been absolutely wonderful to me. So I want to say that I do not believe I could ever, in a million years, replace or duplicate Melissa McKinley because she was one of a kind. I will look forward to working with her on questions and use some of that knowledge over the past eight years. And I think it would be a disservice to the constituents to not do that. She was very gracious to me. She did as she said. We went for a drive. She went over projects. She went over things that were important to her. And surprisingly enough, we do have a lot of things in common that are important to both of us. So I look forward to getting to know each and every person that would like to help or would like to have my ear for things that they feel need to be addressed. And I'm just here for you. That's all I can say. Thank you.
So I'd go ahead and open it up for the fellow members of our board. If anybody else has any comments they'd like to make at this time. Commissioner Kernery, recognized.
Thank you, Mayor Weiss. Just want to take this opportunity to congratulate both of you. I can't put myself in your shoes in what experiences you had that led you to want to run for office and what led you to actually make that decision. I'm somewhat confident you were told many times that this is unachievable. But I think what has happened here is an incredible reflection of Palm Beach County in that we get stuck in our perspective sometimes. And we don't think that making an impact in our community, whether it's through elected office or otherwise, is achievable. But what it reminds me of is that I love Palm Beach County and I always say to myself that the Palm Beach County voters get it right. And they do get it right when they vote. And you're representation of that. We may come from different backgrounds and different perspectives, but I do believe that we're all on the same team and that's to make sure that we do the best for our county. And so it's an honor to serve with you. It's an honor to see you serving up here. And I'm excited for what's to come. Thank you.
Commissioner Marino?
Ladies, welcome. I actually do know what it's like to be the underdog and to end up the winner. There are people that support you, people that didn't. That is in the past. Your future here on the county commission is to work with everybody here, everybody in the audience, all the businesses, all the small businesses, the large businesses. We are all partners and we partner so well, even if it's with other intergovernmental agencies. So I just welcome you and all of us are here to help you. Not break sunshine, of course. But if there are procedural questions or just information or you need a direction to be pointed in, Ms. Baker, as the administrator of our wonderful county and our attorney. Thank you, Janice Kaufman. They are really the two people that will safely help navigate you through this. And please use them. The wealth of knowledge that we have surrounding us here. You know, everybody says, "Oh, you're the county commissioners. You're supposed to know a lot about a lot of things." Well, we, you know, we don't. We don't know a lot about a lot of things. You know, maybe Melissa does. She's been here longer than all of us. But, you know, I'm always amazed by her brain and what she remembers. But our job here is, the best job that we can do is if we can't find an answer, to go to the people who have the answers. And we all will support you in that way. And we welcome you to the county commission.
Anyone else? Commissioner Sacks?
Well, today is the day that politics ends and policy begins. And that's a beautiful thing because you're sitting on a board that makes decisions that, in the political world, may not be that sexy because we take care of garbage collection, we take care of infrastructure, we take care of the needs of people. And that's why your past experiences will be so invaluable. You sit here as representatives of the people in your district, whether they're Democrat, Republican, Independent, or just don't give a damn. Those are your people to represent. And you will. Because you come from a very strong foundation of family and friends and supporters. So you know what it's already like to be a leader in your own community. And now you're a leader in a greater community. Welcome to the Palm Beach County team. Thank you.
Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Baxter, I want to welcome you as you represent the western part of Palm Beach County. I look forward to working with you to continue to address issues for the western residents in Palm Beach County. And Commissioner Woodward, we share many of the coastal communities as you're the Commissioner for District Four and I look forward to working with you as we continue to improve the lives of the residents on the coastal side of Palm Beach County. Thank you.
And I just want to take a moment first to welcome my two new colleagues to our board. You're welcome to Palm Beach County or Team PBC, as we like to call it. You, as we mentioned earlier, it's unfortunately like drinking from a fire hose when we first get up here. But you will get through this and we're all going to work hard to make sure that you are successful. Because when we're successful, our entire county is successful. And that's why we're here, to serve our community. I want to thank my other colleagues for your support over the years, for your willingness to not only share your opinions and ideas, because I learn from each and every one of you every time I have an opportunity to listen to you. We do have different perspectives. We come at things from a different way. But I will tell you, you are some of the smartest, hardest-working people that I know and I'm proud to be able to serve with you. I want to thank my wife, who puts up with me and the trials and tribulations that this job sometimes provides. She reminds me when there are days when I feel like I don't know what I'm doing. She says, "You remember, you stood on street corners begging people to let you do it." And I do. And I am, I will say, and Commissioner Weinroth said it, this is the best gig I've ever had in my life. The biggest honor, the biggest pleasure to be able to serve my community. So I want to thank the voters for your confidence in me to allow me to serve another four years. So I look forward to working together with you all as we move this county forward and provide the best place to live, work, and play, Palm Beach County. Commissioner Kernery, I think we have some comment cards.
Thank you, Mayor. On agenda item seven, comments from the public. We have only one card submitted. It's from Mr. Ron Howard, who'd like to speak to Commissioner Marcy Woodward. Mr. Howard, are you here?
Well, good morning. I'm Ron Howard. I'm a former county commissioner. And I'm happy here today to introduce Marcy Woodward to the folks of Palm Beach County. I'd also like to acknowledge Chairman Barnett from the Republican Party and the other members of the Republican Party, as well as former Commissioner Steve Abrams and former Commissioner Hal Valesh, to be here to help with the introduction. I also want to thank the members of the campaign staff that Marcy put together, Josie Magovich, Bill Riley, as well as others, including her husband, Mike. Fantastic individual. I want to tell the folks here and as well as the people in Palm Beach County what kind of person you have as a county commissioner. During the campaign, I happened to come down with a severe case of the flu. And while I'm home recuperating, I get a phone call and it's from Marcy. And she said, "Ron, do you need anything? Can I help you with anything? If you want me to go shopping, I'll go shopping. If you need something from the drugstore, I'll go to the pharmacy. I want to help you." And I said, "I don't really need any help, but thank you very much, Marcy." So after I hung up and I thought about what she said, and I said to myself, "Here is an individual who is a truly caring person. She is a true caring person." And so I resolved myself, because I was on her campaign, I resolved myself to double my efforts and devise a campaign strategy so that she could win. And so we all worked together, the whole team, and Marcy won. And now I want you, Marcy, Commissioner, to understand that everyone in your district is now here for you and at the same time that we know that you'll be for the folks of Palm Beach County. So I just want to say to you, Marcy, congratulations, good luck, and break a leg.
Since we have no further comments, we're going to go ahead. We will take a break for, let's see if we can keep it to about 10 minutes because we still have work to do as a board. And the staff will reorganize the dais for us. So we will recess for 10 minutes. So we're calling the meeting back to order. And we will, so we recessed. We are now going to come back to order, though, as the Solid Waste Authority. Do we need a roll call? Yes. Roll call, please.
Mayor Weiss?
Here.
Weiss, Mayor Sacks?
Here.
Commissioner Marino?
Here.
Commissioner Baxter?
For the first time, here.
Commissioner Bernard?
Here.
Commissioner Kernery?
Here.
Commissioner Woodward?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. All right. So I will now...
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication.
Thank you. A motion by Commissioner Bernard to receive and file proof of publication, second by Commissioner Sacks, or Vice Mayor Sacks. All in favor? All opposed? That carries seven to zero. All right. Next on our agenda, we have a, on the reorganizational meeting for the Solid Waste Authority.
Yes, so you'll be selecting a chair. Ms. Vassalotti will lead you through the process.
Is there a nomination for the Solid Waste Authority Board Chair?
I recognize... I recognize Commissioner, Commissioner Marino.
Yes, I make a motion that Maria Sax be Chair of the Solid Waste Authority?
Are there any other nominations? All right, seeing no other nominations, all in favor, all opposed, that carries seven to zero as well.
Yes, the next, now the new chair will take over and will take nominations for selection of Vice Chair and Secretary.
Thank you very much. I would like to now open the floor for nominations for.
Miss, Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Marino as the Vice Chair of the Solid Waste Authority.
Are there any other nominations at this time? All right, nominations are closed, all in favor, anyone opposed? Very good, the nomination passes. Congratulations, Vice Chair. And Secretary. Now we're going to move forward with, I'm going to open nominations for Secretary.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner McBernard for Secretary.
Very good. Are there any other nominations for Secretary of the Solid Waste Authority?
Mister Mayor, I'd like to, thanks for nominating me as a Secretary, but I will decline the nomination as a Secretary.
Are there any other nominations for Secretary? Yes, Commissioner Kerner.
Thank you, Chairwoman, and congratulations on your selection and to our Vice Chair as well. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Sarah Baxter as Secretary.
Very good. Are there any other nominations for Secretary of the Solid Waste Authority? If not, the nominations are closed.
Madam Chair?
Yes, I'm sorry. Commissioner Bernard?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Woodward as the Secretary for the Solid Waste Authority.
All right, so any other nominations for Secretary of the Solid Waste Authority? Seeing none, if I can proceed with a vote that would be by the Clerk of the Commission, please?
Commissioner Baxter?
This is, this, your vote is for nomination of Commissioner Baxter for Secretary of the Solid Waste Authority? Or Commissioner Woodward? So you would say, and I'm looking at the lawyer, you would say either, is that correct? You would say either Commissioner Woodward or Commissioner Baxter when your name is called?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, very good. All right, we can proceed with the voice vote at this time. Go right ahead.
Commissioner Baxter?
Myself.
Okay.
So Commissioner Baxter, right.
Commissioner Bernard?
Commissioner Woodward?
Commissioner Kerner?
Baxter. Commissioner Baxter.
Commissioner Marino?
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Commissioner Woodward.
Mayor Weiss?
Commissioner Baxter.
Commissioner Woodward?
I'd like to defer to Baxter as well.
The vote is five to. Commissioner Baxter?
All right, very good. The vote is in. Commissioner Baxter, you will be Secretary of the Solid Waste Authority. And now, do we have a treasurer?
No, we do not.
Do we want a treasurer?
The Solid Waste Authority has one, yes.
Very well. All right, then congratulations, Commissioner Baxter. And I turn the gavel over to the mayor.
Yeah, you would adjourn as the Solid Waste Authority?
That's right. I will adjourn now as the Solid Waste Authority and then turn it over. And thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Dan.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor Sacks. All right, we are reconvening now as a Board of County Commissioners and just, we're approaching the noon hour. The intent was always to break for lunch, so at this point, we'll go ahead and I think we'll break for lunch now. We'll be back. We have a photo at 1:30 on the 11th or on the 12th floor in the McKity Conference Room. So we'll break for an hour and a half and then we will begin the rest of our agenda after that. So for now, the meeting is in recess.